December 8, 2025, in the Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. It's broadcast live on local cable channels eight and 1072 and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. It's 6:00 PM and we'll convene the meeting in open session. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Could you join me in a moment of silence for everyone, all of those who are experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity? Thank you. We are going to... At this time, I'll consider a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Second.
You have to read that. You have to read that.
Your two, right?
It should be read.
Yeah, you're making the motion.
Yes. That is... Motion, the Select Board, I move the Select Board to enter into executive sessions according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Chapter 3 and 7, or Section 3 and 7, for the following purposes: to discuss potential litigation and litigation strategy with respect to Edward A. Baker Boat Ramp and to discuss litigation strategy with respect to Cleary versus Bonvey, ETZBA Town, and Land Court 25 MS miscellaneous 000710. As an open meeting or... Okay, as an open meeting, such litigation may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the Select Board if the Chair so declares, and also to review and approve the draft minutes of the executive session meeting November 3, 2025, in accordance with the open meeting law. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
So move. Or second.
In my opinion, holding these litigation strategy discussions under purpose three regarding the Edward A. Baker Boat Ramp litigation strategy and the case of Cleary L. versus Bonvey L., land court litigation in open session would have a detrimental effect on the Board's litigating position. Could we have a roll call vote? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We'll just confirm, the rule is clear.
Yes. Is there public comments for anything that is on the agenda? No? Okay. All right. Let's open the public hearing.
Are we back on the air? The light's not on.
Now we are. It just...
Okay.
Good call, this.
So we're going to open the public hearing. Phil Clarkwood, please.
To be written to record, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 138, Section 15A, the Select Board is acting on the local licensing authority for the town of Mashpee, will conduct a public hearing on the applications to change the class from seasonal to annual license for the following establishments: Concert Seaberry, New Seaberry LLC doing business as Delore Pompaneset; Concert New Seaberry LLC doing business as Pompaneset Inn; Concert New Seaberry LLC doing business as New Seaberry Athletic Club and Pool. Said hearing will be held on Monday, November 3, well, this is continued, 2025, at 6:15 PM in the Wacoite Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. This hearing will be continued to the next regular scheduled Select Board meeting on Monday, November 17, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Wacoite Meeting Room, and further continued to the regular scheduled Select Board meeting tonight on Monday, December 8, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Wacoite Meeting Room.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Robert Mills. I'm an attorney and I represent Concert. Next to me is Jason Adams. He's the manager of the golf club. He brings with him a wealth of experience. He was 10 years in the industry, five years at Blue Hills Country Club up in Canton. We appreciate your indulgence in continuing this hearing. It gave us an opportunity to really kind of reflect on what we want to do there. And Jason's put together an executive summary, which I've had discussions with the town manager, Mr. Collins, concerning that. And our discussions were very fruitful. We both believe, I think, I can speak for the town manager, that it would be a very productive endeavor. Nothing's been planned yet, simply because we didn't have the licenses in hand, but you've received the executive summary. You know what the plans are. I do want to point out that in the past, both the athletic facility and the Pompaneset had year-round licenses. They were voluntarily relinquished by New Seaberry back in 2017, and one in 2021, I believe. But Jason's excited about the prospect and you see what we have kind of lined up, the some of the thoughts that we have going forward. Really granting us these annual licenses doesn't harm anybody else, so to speak, given the fact that there's special legislation. I know back when I was younger, my dad had a year-round license and it had value, simply because there was no others available. I think the 99 was knocking at its door, wanting to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for these licenses back then. That's not the concern any longer, now that there's sufficient licenses available. Giving us three year-round licenses won't harm anybody. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason. I know, Jason, if you have anything to add about what the prospects are for the future.
Yeah, thank you very much for meeting with us tonight. Yeah, we see, I represent Concert Golf Partners. We own now 39 or 40 clubs around the country. We just see there's some opportunities at New Seaberry to create a year-round establishment for not only the members, but even the public to enjoy portions of the club. I think with, you know, putting some of these licenses in place would allow us to hold things like reconstructing some of the venues at the athletic center, do some small parties, whether it be baby showers and birthday parties or member events, and the same thing down by the beach. Same thing, just to extend our hours or days of operation throughout the course of the season.
Would you...
And, Madam Chair, if I could, with the parameters that have been established, ABCC is fine, so therefore I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions?
And so, at this point, it wouldn't matter if there are no scheduled events at least once per month, but they also can't because they don't have the license to. So at this point, the executive summary and plans would be sufficient to state that they would be using it at least once per month.
Right. That is the intent. But obviously, I understood their concern at the, I think, the last meeting or the meeting prior to, that they weren't able to schedule anything without the license. So it was between a rock and a hard place. But with the summary before you and after having touched base with ABCC and speaking with Attorney Mills relative to the intent behind this, I think you're okay.
Thank you. Other questions?
Is it possible to do something provisionally? Is that the thing? Like, what if... Because everyone else has, that's annual, has to meet that requirement, so I'm just curious.
You could.
You can always do that, but why?
To be equitable? If you're making other establishments meet that requirement for the license to be annual, then you would want that to be equitable and up to snuff, I think, but...
You're essentially setting a precedent on the interpretation of the ABCC guidelines. And so I think it's a fair question, you know. How are you...
I'm not against, I think seasonal use is great. I think year-round is great, especially for residents and jobs and being able to have like more space to have events. I think this, I really enjoyed reading the summary, just from an equity perspective in terms of licensing as well.
Madam Chairman, if I may, so they're looking for year-round licenses because they want to utilize them. They paid over $60 million for this property and they want to get their money's worth. They want to make money. They want to earn their money back by operating these venues, not getting licenses and letting them sit fallow, you know, for no reason. So this plan is, this is a real plan. Hopefully, this isn't scratching the surface, that it's really going to take off and the events will take off and the off-season shoulder weddings at a reduced rate will take off and it'll be a real thing, you know? So we don't want the licenses just to put them in our pocket because that's not the intent. And ABCC doesn't like that either, and the town doesn't like it. I know when we closed at my dad's restaurant, we came here for permission to do that. Every year, we came in, for 30 years. So it's, he understands, being in the industry, what the licenses are for and you're supposed to utilize them. You don't put them in your pocket and do nothing, so.
So, if I may, we're being asked to make the decision to grant the licenses based on the assumption that this will meet ABCC guidelines, and if it doesn't, the ABCC would get involved and there would be a remedy.
Yeah, I think if it was a situation where none of these facilities were used for the entire winter, then I'd probably be calling Attorney Mills up and saying, hey, what's going on? But based on our communication, I think the intent, again, I don't want to speak for them, but based on our communication, whether it be the chili fest, or whether it be a wedding, or whether it be a baby shower, or whether it be a host of other things that were referenced, if that is the intent and to keep it going, then it's better than where we were two meetings ago.
Okay. Other questions before we go to the public?
Yeah. No, I don't have any question. In fact, again, it's ABCC. I mean, I don't think if we meet their criteria and they're okay, I mean, I have no problem with proceeding forward with the year-round.
But the Board can do whatever you desire. You're the licensing authority.
Yep.
And that's what the, Madam Chairman, and that's what the ABC, Ralph Sacramone, who's the executive director, any of you can consult with him, told me, the ABCC has no regulations when it comes to that. They have oversight, but they have no regulations. They have guidelines, but that's the extent of it. And I don't know of a circumstance, and I asked Mr. Sacramone, if he knew of a circumstance where ABCC got involved, and he couldn't think of one, and he's been there for over 30 years. So really, it's this Board that we need to satisfy more than the ABCC. If you feel that we're not utilizing the license in a manner that you think we should be, then you would probably call us back before you.
Okay. Anything? And if there are any other questions?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public? Is there, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Madam Chair, would you like me to make motions for these individually? I think that probably makes sense.
You could, either to grant the license or grant a provisional license for each as you...
Okay. So I motion to approve the alcoholic license annual to Concert New Seaberry LLC doing business as Delore of Pompaneset.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? No. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, he seconded, right?
Yes, you have a first and a second.
I guess I'm still wondering if we could do something provisionally, just in case. I just, I would like to not see precedent when we don't necessarily need to, unless this has historically happened in the past, where someone's switching from seasonal to annual, and maybe they do have events and maybe they don't, and that's fine. I'm not, I'm still relatively new, so.
They had an annual license previously at two of the establishments.
Yeah, I read that.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
I actually think actually us putting an exception in there would be setting a precedent. Now we'd be saying, because are we right now any annual license? Are we out there making sure that they're open? I don't think we are. There's no one out there saying that are they open 12 months, every 30 days, once a month for every month? I don't think there's someone patrolling any licenses we have out there. They've had it previously, so I think if we put restraints on ABC's license, I actually think that would be, that would be something, setting something up new. Right now, we're allowing them to operate an establishment and, you know, on a year-round basis. That's just my perception of the situation.
And they're going to need to renew their license next year.
Right.
Okay. Mike or David?
That's all.
Mike and David?
No questions.
Mike?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Further discussion, I don't hear any. Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Is there a motion for the license for Concert New Seaberry LLC DBA Pompaneset Inn?
So move.
Second.
For annual.
For an annual license. Thank you. Discussion. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And finally, is there a motion for an annual license for Concert New Seaberry LLC DBA New Seaberry Athletic Club and Pool for an annual license?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
All right. I think that does it.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I don't see this goes, but they might have been staying outside.
They were standing outside.
Yeah, so if you want, just, we can just, until they come in, or how do you do it?
Do we want to just... Could we peek out and get one of them?
I think they...
They were out there.
Okay.
Are you going to read them, Ms. Clerk?
Sure.
And you should read them anyway, it's coming.
I should read each individual one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Did they leave?
They'd asked if you could hold them for a minute, the other one's on his way.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sure. Okay. So Catherine Laurent, DPW Director, for review of these five items. Catherine? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening again.
Hi.
So the first item is award of a contract for transportation and disposal of municipal solid waste. Our current contract expires at the end of this calendar year. I'm proposing a six-month extension, which would get us on the same cycle as our annual contract for operation of the transfer station. The rate proposed is a 3% increase over our current contract, and that is based on the CPI.
I'm sorry, it's based on what?
Consumer Price Index.
Thank you.
And the award would be to gotta-do contracting. So this, again, is disposal plus transportation from our transfer station to the disposal site.
Okay. Are there questions?
Motion to approve an award of contract for transportation and disposal of municipal solid waste to gotta-do contracting for a term to expire 12, for a new six-month contract, 1126 through 63026, as recommended?
Second.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay. The next item is amendment to Special Speed Regulation Number 309A for Quinacquisset Avenue. I was before the Board last year to discuss rescinding the regulatory speed limit on Quinacquisset Avenue, which was established back in 1972. Obviously, development along the road has changed since then, and the consensus of the town was that the speed limit of 45 miles an hour was too fast for the conditions. The process per Mass. DOT is that they are the ones that approve speed limits after going through a traffic study process. So to amend that prior regulation, which did include other, as you may have noticed, it included other roads in town, just requires a vote of this Board and signature of the form that was attached to the memo. And this would, with this vote, the speed limit would become 30 miles per hour as a thickly settled area.
And that would include the Great Neck Road?
This is just for Quinacquisset. This is just Quinacquisset Avenue.
I actually have a question. Under the new state law, is it possible to reduce that even further to 25 miles per hour? Or did I misinterpret?
So with the petition, the town could approve on a case-by-case basis, yes, lowering to 25.
Okay. And would there be any, is there a recommendation on your part to even go lower to 25, or is 30 sufficient in your, from your point of view?
I mean, it's, I guess I don't want to speak for the police department. It really comes down to, I think, an enforcement issue. I think people tend to go faster than whatever the posted speed is, whether it's a statutory or a regulatory. So 25, the reality is that people are probably going to be going faster than 25 and similar to as 30. I know a lot of the communities around the Commonwealth have looked at reducing the speed limit for thickly settled in their entire towns down to 25. And I think that may not be a bad idea.
Okay. And it can be done on a street-by-street or by a town basis?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
So before us, we're talking about going from 40 to 30.
It would just be amending.
Well, that was a question I'm asking. 45 to 30, and I'm asking, is there a reason we're not going to 25? That was my question.
Yeah. Which could be done at a subsequent meeting. So this is just to amend the speed, existing speed limit regulation by eliminating that 45 mile an hour, which by default would become the 30.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was looking for the...
So, motion to amend Special Speed Regulation 309A dated January 14, 1972, to omit Quinacquisset Avenue with a new classification of a thickly settled area?
And a speed limit of 30 miles an hour?
Of 30 miles per hour? Is that sufficient? That should be.
I think so. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to have a pause? Do you have everyone here?
No, we're still waiting.
Okay. Next is a proposed contract with the Massachusetts Office of Fishing and Boating Access for Stormwater retrofit project at Mashpee Wakeby Boat Ramp. As you may be aware, we've partnered with APCC and the state on a stormwater improvement project in the parking lot at the boat ramp. The town received, successful in receiving a grant from CZM of $250,000. $350,000 was approved by town meeting through Community Preservation Act. APCC is providing private funding of up to $265,000, and the state is committing up to $400,000 for the project. The project is currently out to bid. I'll probably be before you in January for a contract award for construction this spring. But with that commitment from the state, we do need to sign an MOU for use of the, the town would be the one spearheading the project, overseeing the project. So that is the formal agreement to provide the money.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed contract with Mass. Office of Fishing and Boating Access for Stormwater retrofit project at Mashpee Wakeby Boat Ramp?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And stormwater improvements to Adequan Park.
It was a project that was identified on our stormwater management plan, asset management plan, that was approved by the Board as part of our stormwater permit from EPA. We're required to identify every year a new project to improve stormwater in an area. We're currently under construction at the Sanchoa Pond Boat Ramp on Timber Lane Drive. The project that was next in line was improvements in the parking lot at Adequan Park, and that's the plan that you have before you and is on the screen. This... This location was prioritized because of all of the work that the, the town has been doing in this watershed. You know, we just spoke about the adjacent property where we're doing a, a similar stormwater project in that parking lot. Obviously, the, the town is, is moving forward with wastewater improvements in phase two of a significant area around the pond for stormwater improvements. And so this seemed a, a logical connection to all of that work that we're doing. The project would involve installing bioretention within the existing parking lot. That's the, the island that you see created, so that would be a bioretention to provide pretreatment of stormwater. Once that stormwater was treated, it would then go to infiltration trenches, which are the, the little grid that you see under the asphalt. And then in significant storms, there would be an overflow going to the, the area to the northwest off the parking lot for, as I said, significant storm events. Because of the depth to groundwater, you know, we are at pond level, the project does require that the, the parking lot be elevated. So your, the elevation is anywhere from, you know, zero feet up to two-point-seven feet in that northwest corner where the existing shed used by the Recreation Department, that's the, the highest change in elevation in that corner. We are in, providing handicap accessibility to the beach in two locations through handicap ramps that would be provided. The design, because of adding the bioretention, does result in a reduction of the parking spaces. Right now, there are currently forty-four parking spaces. The new design would reduce that number to thirty. I did do a study this summer to take a look at the use of, of the property through our security cameras and looked at, over the course of the summer, at three different times, two PM, five-thirty PM, and six-forty-five PM, over about a, two dozen different dates. And the highest number of vehicles at any one time was twenty-six. So I, I don't believe that there would be a negative impact with the reduction of parking, but obviously wanted to, to point that out to the board for your consideration. This is permit-level plans, so depending on, on your feedback, we would look to move forward to permitting, and then depending on how long the, the permitting process took, we'd either look at trying to accomplish or start the project this, this spring, or it would be delayed until the fall of, of twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Are there questions?
I guess more of a comment. If it would be, if people would be more amenable to maybe the fall, I think, you know, without community outreach and then closing and starting construction right at the start of the season after a very cold and dark winter, might not be ideal. It might not sit well with folks. And then I was wondering, just based on these plans and also now what you're sharing, if, would there be any level of access? Like, how intensive would the construction be? I just worry about access, and I know a lot of, like, people really enjoy the basketball hoops and stuff during the summer.
Right. So we, we would definitely want to avoid the, the summer season, but once construction did start, we would have to close the, the property down just because of, of the, the work that was required. As, as mentioned, you know, it's a complete reconstruction of the area, elevating the parking lot and installing all of the, the, the infrastructure.
And the courts would remain in the playground?
Correct. Everything around the existing parking would remain unchanged.
What's the timeframe, Catherine?
So I, I think it would be, right, probably at, at least a, a two-to-three-month construction window. You know, it may make sense to, to delay and, and look at construction in, in fall and then allow some time for settling before we do final paving, which we could schedule for the spring. And that would reduce the, the timeframe that the, the, the property was closed to the public as well, if we, if we split the, the construction up into the two seasons, construction seasons.
And would it be entirely, entirely closed off? I know some folks do have ceremony down there and things like that, so I'm just curious about, when we say closed, does that mean, you know, the gate's up, but you could access by foot to the actual water, or?
I, I think we could probably accommodate, just, right, there wouldn't be any place for, for parking, but certainly I think we could accommodate pedestrian traffic and of, you know, through the, the grassed area and into the beach, yes.
Anyone else? Other questions? David?
Looking over this, you said it's going to lose how many parking spaces?
It's going to lose fourteen parking spaces.
That's going to be a lot, I think. Just because there's always overflow every year, anyway. And, so whereas delineated as bioretention system, are those islands around that?
So there's a, a center island, and I don't have a, I don't think we have a pointer.
It looks like islands on, uh, bookends of the system, of the, of the curves.
That is, so, so...
There's like an accessible, looks like there's an accessible cut through? Is that what that shaded?
Okay, so this, yes, there's island here, here, and here. So that's providing your bioretention. That's the, the area for that pretreatment of, of the initial storm flow before it goes into these infiltration chambers here.
So that's a depression with crushed stone rock or something?
It would be grass. It's designed to be a vegetated swale. Right, we are reducing the extent of, of the paving. You can see, here's the existing paved area. So we are eliminating some pavement with the project, and then with, with adding the, the bioretention. Obviously, that's the, the largest impact on, on the reduction in spaces.
I guess that, that's the part that I feel like, you know, we're, we're shrinking the overall size of the parking lot, and then we're adding new features within the parking area that are going to further reduce parking spaces. And I don't know how the general public's going to appreciate that when there's already an overflow, it's limited parking as it is for the amount of volume that the park typically gets annually. So I, I don't know how to remediate, remedy it. You know, I think the stormwater is a, a issue of concern. We need to address it.
We can, we can take a look at, you know, whether along this edge here where the basketball court is, potentially we could put some parallel parking spaces. You know, we might be able to add, add a few more in the, in this location here. But really, yeah, because right now you, you, you have basically four aisles of parking. You're losing an aisle of parking with, with the construction of, of this bioretention.
I actually, I, I agree with you, David. I, I'm kind of, I'm concerned with going from forty-four to thirty. If, could you look at, like you said, adding something on the south side and potentially? What about the east side? I mean, you said you kind of shrunk it up, and could we add some parking, even if it's angled at somewhere, depending on flow? Because I can't really tell the, the flow, if you're coming in, if it's like one direction?
It is one direction, correct.
So if you could have angled spots, maybe to the east, you know, where it's one direction, whether it'd be angled and you could just back up and, but, I mean, I don't know. Because you mentioned you visited basically afternoon times, right?
Yeah, two-thirty.
I looked at two, two, five-thirty and, and six-forty-five.
I mean, I know, yeah, between ten and two is probably, is that prime time?
No, actually, in speaking with the, the Recreation Director, because that's when the, they do have staff there, that...
Wow.
It is not.
Surprises me, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I learned a new thing tonight.
It generally is, is after the, the beach staff leaves that it becomes, is busier.
Was this during the weekdays and weekends? Like, what was the sampling?
Both, right.
Because I think, also, you're relocating the porta potty over to, closer to the beach, so I don't know what informed that. I mean...
So just to, to try to bring the, the portable toilets closer to where the, the users are so they're not having to walk across a parking lot to access it. Right now, the portable toilet is over here, so someone on the beach has to walk through the parking lot to, to get to it. So we just thought that was a safety improvement. I mean, that can go back to that corner, but we were trying to address a safety concern with, with having, you know, young children and others having to walk through traffic.
It's also by the eating area, too.
What's that?
I don't know if anybody wants to smell it laying on the beach, though. I'd rather walk to it and not smell it than, if I'm enjoying it, myself. Because it, it seems like, you know, you're, you're eating up a parking space or two by relocating it to that area. I don't know what informed the narrowing that upper right around the porta potty location now, as it's currently designed. You know, you're, you're getting rid of some of that area with realigning the boulders along that eastern side?
Right. So, right, we, we're just trying to, to create a more defined entrance to slow the traffic as it approaches the beach. You know, we did a few years ago have to install a speed table because of the, the speed of vehicles coming down Lake Avenue to enter the parking lot. So that was just, again, another safety feature to, to try to, again, define and slow the, the traffic as it's entering the parking lot.
Would, would it be possible, do you need this tonight, or would it be possible for you to come back to us?
Of course.
Showing where additional parking could go and addressing some of these concerns so that we can move this forward in a way that everybody thinks makes, makes good sense for the town?
Yes, no, that was the point of, of coming before the, the board tonight, was to, to, to get some feedback before we move forward with any permitting. So, so certainly, you know, specifically if, if, as suggested, we were looking at a fall construction, there is, is time to, to, to make, try to make some adjustments.
And come back and share those, and then we can decide to move forward, because it sounds like there are some concerns that we can't address tonight.
Sure, of course.
All right. Could we interrupt your presentation for just a minute and move forward on the agenda and then come back to you? Would, would that, would that be okay?
You think this is going to be out of that line?
Could be. And go to... And go to the presentation of hometown hero proclamations for Jack Barowski and Brody Perry, Boy Scout Troop Thirty-Six. Do you want to have them come up?
Sure. Do you, do both of yous want to come up, actually? One of yous want to, you can, both of yous, you can sit side by side if you want.
Welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in today. Um, we just, on behalf of the town, I'd like to read off a couple of proclamations for you both, and I can't say how proud I am of both of you for representing all the traits of the scout law and just behaving in the way that scouts are supposed to behave and setting the example for the community, so, and helping others in need. So, thank you very much for both, to both of yous. So I'll, I'll start with Jack on his proclamation, and I'll, then I'll get into Brody's. So again, a proclamation hometown hero, Jack Barowski. Whereas the mission of scouting in America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over the lifetime, over the lifetimes by installing, instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law, which include trustworthiness, loyalty, helpfulness, friendliness, courtesy, kindness, obedience, cheerfulness, thriftiness, bravery, cleanliness, and reverence. And whereas the Mashpee High School senior, Jack Barowski, has been a member of the Boy Scouts of, Boy Scouts of America, Troop Thirty-Six, for nearly a decade. And whereas, on the evening of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, after a full day of hiking up and across Franconia Ridge in New Hampshire, Jack Barowski and his fellow troop members encountered two hikers attempting to carry a injured hiker down the mountain and immediately offered them food and water. And whereas, after a quick assessment of the situation, Jack Barowski, with the help of another scout, selfishly offered to carry this injured hiker down two miles of rugged trail in a dark, in, in, in the dark, to the safety of their campsite. And whereas, Jack Barowski remained cheerful in spite of this unforeseen encounter and undaunted in the face of the challenging nighttime descent while transporting a stricken hiker. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Mashpee Select Board does hereby proclaim Jack Barowski to be the hometown hero who exemplifies the tenets of the scout oath and law and whose actions have brought great credit upon himself, his family, and his troop in the town of Mashpee, on behalf of the Mashpee Select Board. Thank you very much. And proclamation hometown hero, Brody Perry. Whereas the mission of the scouting America is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over the lifetime by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law, which include trustworthiness, loyalty, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. I'm sorry, now I'm reading as a scout leader, right? So, and whereas Mashpee High School senior Brody Perry has been a member of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop Thirty-Six, for nearly a decade. And whereas, on the evening of November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, after a full day of hiking up and across Franconia Notch in New Hampshire, Brody Perry and his fellow troop members encountered two hikers attempting to carry on the injured hiker down the mountain and immediately offered them food and water. And whereas, after a quick assessment of the situation, Brody Perry, with the help of another scout, selfishly offered to carry the injured hiker down two miles of rugged trail in the dark to the safety of their campsite. And whereas, Brody Perry remained cheerful in, in spite of this unforeseen encounter and undaunted in the, in the face of challenging nighttime descent while transporting a stricken hiker. and now therefore, be it resolved that the Mashpee Select Board does hereby proclaim Brody Perry to be the hometown hero who exemplifies the tenets of the Scout oath and law and whose actions have brought great credit upon himself, his troop, his family, and the town of Mashpee." Congratulations. So, huh? Oh, please, that'd be great.
Definitely. Should the select board get, not the select board? Do you want the board?
Yes.
Catherine's got to follow that one. Okay. Congratulations. And Catherine, would you like to join us again? So, "Presentation of the Great Neck, Road North and Route One Thirty Roundabout."
So, this is a project that was started back in December of twenty-twenty-one when the board made a decision at the time to replace the existing traffic signal out at the intersection of Great Neck Road North and Route One Thirty with a roundabout. The traffic study completed for the project found that replacement of the signal with the roundabout would improve traffic flow through the intersection, improving the overall level of service, while there will still be delays during, you know, peak times, particularly in the summer. With the roundabout, you are moving traffic, you know, continuously through the intersection rather than having them stop. So this is the final design development plan. Again, bringing it before the board. We're trying to coordinate the project with the wastewater project that will be installing a sewer main in this intersection. That's part of Phase Two of the wastewater plan. I believe this location is slated for the wastewater work within the next year. So again, timing-wise, you know, we would coordinate with that project. We've been sharing design plans with the Design Engineers for Wastewater, and they've been sharing their plans with us. So I think one of the changes since the conceptual plan was presented to the board a few years ago, we do still have a right turn lane from Great Neck Road North onto Route One Thirty, but it is not as a separate slip lane, which was under the prior design. So we've reduced, I guess, the footprint of the roundabout a little bit, but still providing, you know, that movement of traffic, which is one of the predominant directions. We also are maintaining an entrance for the Mashpee Country Store off the roundabout, so that would be an enter-only option. And as discussed with the town manager, with that consolidated entrance and parking for the Country Store and Duncan, hopefully, we would be able to alleviate the need for large trailer trucks to back into those two properties from Route One Thirty, providing a little bit more of a maneuvering area for that movement.
Could you, could you explain the two lanes coming into the rotary from Great Neck Road? Just, I'm confused by that.
So, traffic approaching the roundabout, if you were making that right turn to continue on Route One Thirty towards Barnstable, you would stay to the right and just continue without really entering the roundabout? Other traffic would stay on the left-hand side and would be able to maneuver around?
Okay. Tracy?
A couple of things. Growing up here all my life, I remember when there was, it was just a T. It was like the YWAS over there. And I'm concerned if the crosswalks, is that coming with some sort of lighting apparatus? Because I think the traffic lights with the timers to allow, you know, children, pedestrians, et cetera, to cross has been instrumental in the safety of that area. So I'm unsure if this would then be a conventional crosswalk?
So, we haven't reached, I guess, that level of design. So right now, you know, there is an area of refuge as you're crossing at each of the three locations. Whether, there would not be a signal there, but we certainly could take a look at whether or not we put a rapid flashing beacon. We just threw a grant from the state, installed one where the existing multi-use path on Route One Thirty crosses from the south side of the road to the north side of the road. There's one down on Great Neck Road South at Donna's Lane and Windtime. So we could look at installing that type of control. It is a state law that, you know, vehicles are supposed to yield to pedestrians if they are in a crosswalk, but having that rapid flashing beacon would...
Yeah, I just think, yes, it is state law, and ideally, everyone is braking for pedestrians. And also, if one, with this new setup, it looks like, oh, I'm just going to get to go with the flow and not hit, I could easily see someone kind of just keeping thirty miles per hour, which that would be a really, I guess, abrupt stop if there's like someone there crossing. And I'm also wondering, I feel like there's a residence right next to the Country Store.
Correct. So that driveway is maintained right here? So they could either, you know, enter through here, or this is a...
I thought that was a one-way.
No, this is, this is, this is one-way here. So they could enter here. And then this is a two-way, this is an enter and exit, and then this is an exit.
I, okay.
But there's no way for, like Aunt Jan's egress to come out and head east? Because you're widening, I don't remember committing to the roundabout because there were so many issues to it, and both residences being a part of that discussion, as well as the Corner Store. And, you know, we're not showing on the plan before us, we're not showing on Jan's driveway coming down and how that's supposed to work. So we're not thinking about that. It's ancillary, it's not depicted, so it's not forcing us to consider her challenges. She's an elder, a golden elder, and so I am concerned with that. We're widening the road with the yellow markings, that's, you're making it further that she has to travel if she was to take her life into her hands and take, and make a left turn to head east on that section coming out of the middle driveway.
Wouldn't that be everyone, too? Like, if you're in the Corner Store, everyone would have to make that choice or...
You're essentially forcing everyone to take and head west onto the road. Then they're going to have to turn around someplace to head back east, because this is going to be a mess.
So we would take a look at this. So, no, there would be an opening so that people would be able to take a left turn out of here.
Yeah, those painted lines kind of just make it look like.
So how would that?
No, but I mean, functionality-wise, though, it's going to, it's going to be, this is going to be a disaster. Just, because as I said before, that's a blind corner to the west of Duncan Donuts. If you come out of that, it's on a hill and it's on a corner. So when you're coming out of Duncan Donuts as it stands now, and you come out of that, it's challenging to take, to make a left-hand turn and head east. Now, only because it's on a hill and a corner at that location. So now if you try to come out in that middle section so that you create a little more visual distance to consider taking your life into your hands, you've got to go further across to head east. I just, and then I think another issue is, and now you have residents actually living in Mr. Coombs' house, so that elevates concerns with their egress, and I think they're going to run into the same problem, because they're going to be forced to take and head west on that, because now you've got traffic racing down the outskirts of the southeast artery that circumvents the rotary. They're going to be speeding, and now they're going to be taking their life to the hands to come out and head east on One Thirty, crossing over the yellow as well. That residence, you know, it's going to prove challenging.
Well, I think they have, right.
It does look like it's encroaching significantly on, it's hard to see the existing roadway layout with the rendering.
The right of way is this red line, so we are staying within the...
But to the southeast, it looks like it's encroaching significantly on the cost of property here to the...
Which, correct, which is town property.
Right.
Right.
I just, I don't know how this is going to work.
So, yeah, there are challenges today for the people that, the two residents in that location, as well as for the Duncan Donuts. We are providing an exit that improves visibility for people exiting Duncan Donuts, Duncan. You know, they don't, right now, this is, this is the current exit here, which will remain, but we're providing an additional location, which improves the sight distance for vehicles that are exiting that property.
So Catherine, to the, can you move your hour to the other side of the, you know, the same place you just were, the two exits, right? So can you, where your hour is now, can that be shortened and encouraged so you're away from, you pull traffic entering and exiting away from the rotary? See, because right now, where your hour is, that looks like it's going to be the main exit, right?
Correct.
But can we make the main exit on the other side of those three bushes, if, yeah, there?
So this is where there's the issue with the sight distance. So by relocating the exit to here, we're still maintaining this one, but this one improves the sight distance for people that are trying to take that left out of Duncan.
So what I'm concerned about is, and I think, David, you kind of mentioned it, is coming out of that opening to the right of the three, you know, trees, if you will, that's, that might be too hard to come out and go towards the rotary?
Correct.
Because it's too close.
It's, you don't have great sight distance here, that's the existing condition.
You don't, really, yeah.
Got a question over here.
Yeah, I had a couple. One is, I'm curious about the data, like what are the impacts or the desired impacts from doing this plan as opposed to traffic lights? And the other is, just to reiterate, I mean, I just, I grew up when there weren't really any safety standards much at that, and it was a very scary intersection. Just the thought of removing traffic lights from there makes me, and that we're all just going to collectively be responsible, driving citizens without red lights making us stop, makes me a little nervous. And I, I'm, I live off of One Thirty, so I understand the frustration of the backup. I mean, it's really intense, even off-season at certain parts of the day. It's, no one wants to sit in traffic. Also, no one doesn't really want to risk their life grabbing milk at the Corner Store. It just, yeah, I have reservations. I'm not sure how, again, I'm still relatively new. I'm not sure how, if a former board composition voted for something, but I'd love to have more conversation.
Go to the town manager.
One of the things that I had mentioned to the director earlier today is, I have seen tractor-trailers at Duncan Donuts back up on that far side to the left, and I'm just concerned that if one is in there in the future with this design, that it's going to clog the people that are going through or attempting to exit by the drive-through. So my question to her earlier was whether or not that island could be shortened a little bit, which is what I think you mentioned. And then my second question, which I apologize, I did not ask you earlier, Catherine. The lane coming from Great Neck Road North, taking a right onto One Thirty, is that wide enough right at the point where vehicles are going to be in the other lane where too wide is not going to pose a safety issue?
So this is designed for two vehicles? One, again, that would be making this motion to go around, and then the one that would be going here. There is, you know, a point where, you know, these folks are still going to have to pay attention to where this car is going?
And my only concern from experience is the vehicles coming down Great Neck Road North into the roundabout, and you have vehicles coming from the Duncan Donuts area into the roundabout. The vehicle that just wants to go around the roundabout is possibly going to start to get into the aggressive nature with the person that's in the roundabout. If they veer to the right, they're going to slam right into the vehicle that's just simply trying to go down Route One Thirty.
Right. So this is not the first roundabout in the country, in the Commonwealth, in the state? So, you know, those are existing issues that you have now with the slip lane. I know we've had accidents for that, for that same reason with the existing condition, where someone isn't paying attention as they are in that slip lane making that motion to through traffic on One Thirty. So, you know, I can provide the original study, the existing traffic signal is operating at a Level F. That's the worst operation for a traffic signal. Again, a roundabout isn't going to improve the level of service, so everything's functioning at a Level A, which is the best, but it does improve the traffic flow over what the current signal is. You know, certainly, this is a decision for the board, and it sounds like that more information is needed, and you may perhaps want to revisit that decision. I guess let's make that decision now before we spend more money on design.
I know, I believe I was on the board when you first brought this forward to us, and I think probably Andy was. And the difference in the performance was enough to make us want to go forward, because currently, it's... Because currently it's absolutely horrible. And a lot of the issues that you've brought forward are, you know, issues that this is gonna help alleviate. When I when I go out here on Great Neck North and go go up to, I think you said east to one thirty, I I use that, it's the same lane, basically. It's a slip lane. They've they've got that double wide there. And I think that when you have that slight sight difference from one thirty, bringing that over is gonna improve your sight vision. And you're only gonna double lane, just like you currently have, to cross. It's not like they've made it three lanes wide now and causing more traffic. As far as the uh the person or whoever is currently into um Mr. Coombs' house, that person currently has to go through two lanes to take a left now anyway. So it's not really gaining anything uh from as far as any more danger than he currently has. Uh, but it is improving the volume going through there. I mean, if you look at one forty-nine or you look at the one, I don't know what they call it, the banana loop or whatever up here.
Banana up here.
Yeah, um, those have all improved. That one forty-nine and um, is it Farmers? I can't remember the name of the road there. Cause that thing has improved a hundred percent. We used to back up, I don't know how far on that road back in the day. You must remember, David, down there. So I think this is an improvement. I think if you saw the study that was done, it would help you understand why we went this way. So I just wanted to bring that up as from a former member that went through this before.
Appreciate it.
I do wanna echo though what Tracy mentioned, that um I'm concerned though about the pedestrians. Gonna have some sort of signal there.
Absolutely.
Or otherwise, um, if if you expect vehicles to slow down and stop just because there's a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
Wishful thinking.
Especially coming out of a rotary.
So just uh actually three things and a couple of them are actually just covered. So I would love to, first off, compared to, when was the last time, was it three, four years ago?
Four years ago, correct.
I can't believe it, it seems like it was just yesterday. But so if you've seen the plan from four years ago?
Yes.
And we have questions, you, I mean, there was, this is, this is amazing compared to. So well done on getting to this point. I but so my question would be is, I think it's three-part, is the island? I would love to see that shrunk, maybe it's shorter, just to increase visibility. And that left, if I'm looking at it, the left side, I do think it would be easier for people coming out if they were trying to take a left turn towards the rotary. If they were a little bit further away from the rotary so they could, you know, see traffic quicker without them swinging around a rotary. So that would be my, I think that's number two. And number three is the, how do the flashes work? Cause you're absolutely right, I mean, you you have to, I mean, I see, how many times I drive up and down one thirty, cause I also live right off of one thirty? There's people biking, walking.
Did it once on cause you were road and I felt so, it was pitch dark and there was someone at the crosswalk and I felt bad for.
Yeah, so do these flashes?
Lights flashing at wind chime?
Those are great, yeah.
That's what she's referring to.
So what happens, like, does it, you like a, press a button and it starts to flash?
It's like you can't miss it.
And it just, it's on for, so but it draws attention, that's perfect. So adding those, I'd be satisfied in all three sec- sections. And again, the island and um, there was one more point I had. That's that's good. I think I covered my possible changes. Oh, and I actually, I love how the the turnoff now has one of the major changes. You had the, you can enter the convenience store. I think, and it makes sense and the flow, and I think that's why if we shrunk that island. And again, I am definitely concerned about David's point earlier. Trying to come out this middle spot with that everybody flying around a rotary. But somehow the rotary seemed to work. They, I'm not a big fan, but they work.
We know the Duncan's, you know, line. I just, yeah, I'm sure there's no perfect scenario that makes every single variable and every single person happy. I just think ultimately just for the safety, the residents that currently live there, pedestrians, you know, those are kind of my top.
Madam Chair?
Please.
One last round. I guess, I guess another question that I have is, where this is a historic district, the only historic district in the town, has the Historic District Commission looked at this and have they chimed in on it? I mean, um, that's a concern because we're essentially reconfiguring the corner, the corner stores entire parking. We're adding, you know, the the shrubs with the parking that runs parallel north and south uh in that area, which is essentially um encumbering the access for Aunt Jan as a resident in the adequate house. That that, like I said, it's not even shown, so i- it's not being considered fully. If it's not depicted as her egress and how that relates to what we're designing. And so that's a major concern for me. You know, we're adding a bike path, a shared use path. So that's encroaching on existing parking as we are familiar with it now uh over in that area. So we're reconfiguring all this. I imagine there's gonna be significant amount of lighting for pedestrians in the evening and things like that. So now you're adding light influences to the historic district. And I I mean, some of the hardscapes within the roadway layouts, like the islands and things, I understand they have their aesthetic, but they they also add functionality to helping with the egress and pedestrian traffic. But they're taking up additional space as well that you have to navigate while driving. So I think they add to the problem, you know, the roundabouts, I I I think they work in certain circumstances, otherwise I don't know that they always are the best solution. It seems like they're using them for a lot more nowadays. This area just is unique in that it has a lot going on with the residences, the commercial businesses, and the traffic um needs of the intersection. So i- i- it's a lot, and it's within the historic district. You know, so I I don't know. I'd be really interested in seeing what Butters have to say about it. Specifically Aunt Jan and the new owners of the Coombs' property to hear their voice and before committing to anything. That's, I guess, um, I'll leave it at that.
So we're hearing a lot of suggestions. Is it possible for you to incorporate some of those and be able to bring this back? And I'm thinking of um showing the access for those residents who are gonna need to come into, who're gonna need to leave their homes. So the egress for those residents and as well as the flashing lights. And could you send to the board the traffic study so we would be more educated? Also, um, do not leave the Historic Commu- um Commission in the dark to be able to share that with them. Those were the major concerns, I think, I've heard from people. Also, um, as John was discussing, I don't know what to call them. The the three, the three trees, the green area, to be looking at if it's possible to move the egress further away from the rotary itself and that. I don't know if those are easy to do or if I'm asking you to do something that's.
No, certainly we'll we'll take a look at all of that. Again, this was trying to optimize the sight distance for people exiting the property. As you get closer to where the existing exit is, you're gonna run into the same problem that you have with that, where you just don't have the sight distance to see the the traffic that's coming technically southbound on on one thirty. So so we can, we can take a look at at all of what you've suggested. And yes, again, this is presenting a plan so that we can make a decision and move forward to finalize, again, to coincide with the sewer wastewater construction.
And that just makes perfect sense. And I think um all of us, we weren't all on the board in twenty-one, will understand it better if we have a copy of the traffic study. So I mean, that'll answer some of the questions we have. And just talking about um where the flashing lights might be, what those would look like, how far the crosswalks are from where cars are exiting the rotary, I think would be useful in order for us to make a decision. Is, does that make sense?
Of course.
Aunt Jan's egress as well.
Yeah, so it is shown, but we'll we'll try to show it a little bit more clearly.
I don't know how that's gonna relate with deliveries either.
So she has to wait with Dunkin' Donuts and corner store people to leave her.
Correct, I I, right, yes.
So we're impeding on our current egress by.
She just has her own separate thing right now next to the corner store. So she doesn't have to wait for the Dunkin' Donuts people or country store people. She can just come and go from her residence and doing this would mean.
You're infringing on our easement. To some extent, I mean.
So so we're trying to consolidate the the um curb cuts along that section and again, shift them oh far enough away from the roundabout that they're able to, again, safely enter and exit from the property. But yes, we will take a look at that.
I I I understand the mission, I just don't have the resolve.
But even to show, with people agree or don't, to show how that egress works.
Yes.
Where um that residence would come through and what that looks like. Does it, does that address your issues?
I think everybody.
Does. Catherine comes back with that and you have the traffic study, does that address your concerns? Or did I miss?
I don't think you missed anything.
Are we good for for now?
Yes.
Okay. Catherine, thank you.
Of course.
Thanks very much. We have a update on the Environmental Management Commission from Andrew Gottlieb, Community Advisory Council Representative. Welcome, Mr. Gottlieb.
Good evening. I miss being a roadway engineer and talking to you about those things. So um, you appointed me to be your representative to the Citizens Advisory Council, advising the Environmental Management Commission. I often thought, when I sat in your seat, that we appoint people to represent the town and then you never hear from them. So we go to the meetings, um, you know, we've had meeting back in October. And I just thought it would be worth giving you a couple of minutes on what was discussed. You saw in the materials in your packet, there were a bunch of proposals to change environmental performance standards, which are the sort of guidelines by which um the Management Commission conveys to the Guard what training activities are allowed and what standards are met. There's opportunities, working with the staff and the EMC, where the Guard can ask for waivers, exceptions to the environmental standards. And the things that were proposed and discussed in the presentation in your packet were discussed by the Citizens Advisory Council. They then went to the Full Environmental Management Commission and were adopted. So basically, things that were being approved as a matter of course with a lot of process, use of the ranges and the like for different types of operations, different types of armaments, were adjusted to account for the best practices that the staff and the Guard had determined to be appropriate. So those passed and will make it easier for the Guard to do their small arms range work on the existing ranges and lower the burden on the staff for the Environmental Management Commission. And generally speaking, there was, those changes were years in the making and no particular concerns were raised during the public process. The major thing that I think is worth um bring back to the board and the community is that um back in twenty twenty-four, the Guard engaged the National Academy of Sciences to do a non-public review of proposed multipurpose machine gun range, its impacts on the um potential impacts on the drinking water and the aquifer at the Upper Cape Regional Water Supply. The National Academy's report, while not a public document, did surface in a result of a a public records request that I actually asked for. And the transcript, even though there was no consensus findings, identified a number of areas of concern that the experts in the National Academy raised. And the general discussion, since there was no consensus report, was that the issues raised in that twenty twenty-four study warranted further analysis in what is known as a public consensus study. And so the Guard has pursued um the development of a um consensus study that was funded just for about nine hundred thousand dollars in the recently signed military construction federal legislation that came at the end of the shutdown. So they've identified and they shared this information with the CAC that they have identified federal funding um for this consensus study. The study will bring in people convened by the National Academy of Sciences to look at act- activity around ranges on Camp Edwards historically, identify a scope, and then the study will provide a report that addresses the issues and concerns that have been raised over the years. It's unclear at the moment, cause no one's seen a scope, whether it's really talking about the small arms ranges that they currently have and how that relates to the proposed larger multipurpose machine gun range that they still intend to pursue, even though the issue was dropped um at the end of twenty twenty-four. So long way of saying that sometime this year, I think it's reasonable to expect that the Guard will um execute contract with the National Academy of Science to develop a scope that will be evaluated in a public hearing process. There'll be some technical work back and forth. Major difference between this report and the one done in twenty twenty-four is that'll have a public engagement component to it. And so I think it's just something that, given the board's historic interest and concerns with protection and drinking water, that you wanna pay attention to. Beyond that, no real details. We have not been, that a scope shared with us and we don't know anything yet about the timing. Three weeks ago or so at the at the MC three meeting, I talked to Matt Porter and he indicated that they had not yet received the money even though the appropriation was done. So they didn't have a schedule yet. So that's the major piece that came out of um, out of the the um most recent fall meeting of the CAC. And I just wanted you to be aware of it.
And when did you think that they would be coming out with this, with the study?
I have no idea.
What did it sound, if you had to guess, what did it sound like?
My guess is sometime mid to late twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm sorry. You know, by the time they end up doing the contracting and all that stuff, I think it'll take a while. And they anticipated being a eighteen to twenty-four month process. But it won't happen fast, but it is coming. So we are, you ought to be aware of it and pay attention to it as as these things develop. Okay, that was it.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, so on on this, uh, towards the back of the first packet, um, the training updates?
Yeah.
They have the um supported events, Camp Edwards controlled hunts, youth deer scouting, um, various hunts and things. And so with all the PFOS that's over there, has anybody sampled the deer to know?
Not that I'm aware of. I know it's been an issue in the state of Maine as a general health consumption a warning for all deer in the state of Maine due to PFAS and, you know, as a result of application of PFAS contaminated fertilizers, you know, biosolids that have been used as compost. So it's a big issue in in Maine. I'm not aware of Massachusetts having done anything in particular about it.
Well, because, you know, we're seeing the leeching getting all the way where it's affecting our wastewater initiatives south of the base um with priority areas around the Waukegan watershed. We know it's transferred by hydrology and rainfall and watershed. We know it's transferred by hydrology and rainfall and watersheds. And so, the deer, you know, they're not stagnant. They move around. They eat and drink out of the surface waters. And so, I'm wondering, you know, we're, we're supporting hunts, which, you know, I'm all for getting more hunters, people in the environment, you know, connecting with the environment and things like that. But, like, are you encouraging people to eat forever chemical loaded deer? That's, that's a concern.
I don't know what, if there has been sampling of that deer population. What I do know is that the extent and sources of PFAS contamination on, in the training areas have not been fully characterized yet by the guard. There's been a couple of reports. They do five-year reports. They did one in '25, and then they did one in 2020. In both reports, they mentioned that there's uncharacterized loads of PFAS for which source characterization has not been complete. And they don't start doing mitigation until they have completed characterization of the site. So, it's generally speaking, as yet, uncontrolled and untreated. So, I don't think anybody has a real good feel yet for what the loading is, and therefore how it plays out into environmental receptors like wildlife and deer.
So, so that's where I, I raised that point because, like, if we're working with the National Academy of Sciences, isn't that something that maybe should be looked at as, as a part of their comprehensive study and-
Not to speak for them, David, but their scope was rela- was related to ranges, not to the broader characterization. The place you could, the town could ask for a characterization would be through the 20, the Hazardous Waste Site Assessment Program that DEP runs, 21E program. It'd be certainly appropriate to say, as part of the overall site characterization, what are you seeing in terms of migration of contamination up into the food chain and specifically into deer? So there is an avenue that, that the town could ask for that, that work to be done. It wouldn't be through the NAS thing. I mean, the NAS will study whatever you pay them to study. But right now, the money is limited to, to range evaluation, not the broader environmental thing. And there's a lot of changes happening at the federal level on lowering the bar for PFAS contamination. And by that, I mean not, not requiring as aggressive a cleanup to lo- to lower levels than was previously anticipated a couple of years ago. So, the, the federal regulatory world is becoming less stringent. You really have to focus on the state regulatory program through 21E.
Well, that's fine. I guess with the performance standards and, you know, and operations maintenance and monitoring as part of the environmental management commissions were, in those areas, I feel like, you know, the state is the property owner. The DoD is just leasing.
Correct.
And so, like, with all the effects of the PFAS leaching out into our area, because we're south of it, you know, I'm wondering, how is that being addressed? How's the landlord holding the tenant accountable and things like that? And if we're looking at environmental performance revisions, which is this kind of a state commission, how will we address some of that and looking into that and holding them accountable? Because it's holding up our wastewater designs on the Waukega watershed.
The argument would be that the Environmental Management Commission regulates and has oversight over the training activities and assuring the consistency of training activities with the environmental performance standards. The general use of, and the theory is that the, the general distribution of PFAS on-site comes from historic practices, old materials, and the use of firefighting foam with PFAS compounds. There was a move, so tho- those things fall outside, by and large, fall outside the environmental management commission's purview. They fall within the state's regulatory authority as a landlord and as the enforcer of 21E. The feds had been phasing out the use of firefighting foam with PFAS compounds. That has been reversed by the current administration. So they are going to continue to allow PFAS-laden foams to be utilized in facilities like this. So, you know, it, it's an imperfect thing. I guess, I'm not incredibly well-versed in the details of where they are on-site assessment in 21E. But the town could get a briefing by that, by DEP, Southeast Regional Office, on that. There's a lot of reports. They do come into town. I'm not sure who's looking at them.
I, I feel like Joint Base Cape Cod hasn't wholly given up on the idea of the gun range, you know, expanding the-
Have not. They have stated at the MC3 meeting recently, even though the range is not within the area covered by MC3, and they've certainly said, in response to direct questioning, it pays to be on the right side of the table because they do answer those questions now, that they intend to pursue the range again. They don't have funding for it. All they have is funding for the study, but it is within their plan to continue to pursue that range.
So, I, I guess, part of my logic is, you know, before you start, you want to create a new problem, clean up your old problem. You know what I mean, is where I'm at. And I know there's all the separate little divisions over there, but DoD is the DoD and it's all DoD over there. The effects are, you know, we like to, we always get compartmentalized and put blinders on and, and kind of look and segmented, but it's a cumulative effects of the Department of Defense activities on the base.
As someone who's not, I mean, I've been critical of the department for the range. Furtherance of PFAS contamination associated with the expanded range is not one of the issues that's significantly on the table. There's a lot of other issues around heavy metals and other firing compounds that need to be resolved, but the PFAS part of it has really not been shown to be a factor in the range's operation themselves. So, but you're not wrong that it is compartmentalized and it's really hard to pay attention to where everything slots into whose particular regulatory authority on a given issue.
That's where I struggle.
But it sounds as though we have pathways. You talked about getting a 21E briefing from the Southeast Office of Environmental Protection or no?
DEP, DEP Southeast Regional Office.
So, I mean, that's something that we could do as a board to ask for that. And it sounds as though, as a board, we could also get very involved proactively as soon as we hear what's happening with the proposal to move the machine gun range forward.
Yeah, I'm happy to share with the town manager the highlighted sections of the State of the Range Report that speak to PFAS characterization, so at least it gives you a basis of where to start with them.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions?
I'll be back in the spring when we meet again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and correspondence. Old business. New business. Public comment for any item not on the agenda. No additional topics. Liaison reports?
I was going to bring up something that, um, some of you guys, John may know. Years past, I worked with Mash- Mashpee TV and did a show called What You Need to Know. And all that was, was an opportunity to enhance the communication relative to certain things that were happening in town. An example was, years ago, people would say to me, "What the hell do you mean by free cash?" Go into an annual meeting and they didn't know what it was. So, I arranged with Don Thayer. We had like an eight-question public service announcement. And I, I said, "This has come up," and questioned, and Don would explain what it is. So, I talked to Chris Ball and Rodney and Michael and I chatted. I'd like to do that again. It's a matter of selecting or determining what would be a good topic. And there are topics that people have asked questions. You all get questions. I'd love to be a recipient to some of those questions, and I could put together a little program. It's only five to 10 minutes, maybe. And it's not a political statement, and it's not setting direction. It's basically answering questions that we get from the public at large. So, unless you have objections to it, I'd like to get started on it. Chris and I talked about it. We're ready to go.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. I think you mentioned that before, so that's, that's awesome. I'm looking forward to it. I'll, I'll send you some questions too.
Oh, great, great. Thank you. Fill them up with questions.
Did you give out free cash at the end?
You have to put that question in every time.
Yeah, I know.
Because we always get that question.
Other liaison report. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate, we appreciate it. Other liaison reports?
None at this time.
Okay. Um, I have, I have, I have a few. One's underwater quality. Let me see if I can. So, as liaison to the tribe, I was able to, and you didn't have to be a liaison to the tribe. The entire community was invited to the Thanksgiving ceremony at the Old Indian Meeting House on November 22nd, which was followed by dinner at the Government Center. And everybody in the community wasn't, it was invited to that. It was a wonderful way to, to begin, begin the holiday season. So, I just wanted to share that. They've been doing, I believe this was year 17. With regard to CPC, the CPC is currently reviewing five applications. There's one from the Historical Commission. There are actually, and then there are a couple from private entities for historical purposes. There's something for Homeyer and also a big item for the Mashpee Housing Authority, for the trust to be able to be receiving money so that we can build what we have in the trust. So, that's going on. The Sewer Commission, Mag Draneville presented the Notice of Project Change, and basically with the phases focused very clearly on Waukega Bay. He put together a map, which he shared with the Sewer Commission that he'll be sharing with us. Letters went out to approximately 1,200 residents that are going to be impacted by Phase Two. So, there, which is preceding as, had planned, we had planned. So, it's kind of the green stake letter, and those have all gone out. There's also a posting on the Sewer webpage. Can I just do a little about the Rec Department? I don't know who has that, but the tree lighting on Saturday was very well attended. Many thanks to Mary and the Rec Department. And also, Fill the Van was amazingly successful. I'm sure everybody's seen it online. Two and a half vans were, we filled, or they filled two and a half vans. And that food was distributed to the Wampanoag Food Pantry, Christ the King Food Pantry, and the Fama Service Center. And the only, oh, the chamber delivered 213 meals the day before Thanksgiving. And just a reminder, the parade Coastal Cheer is the theme. I hear people are in costumes for Coastal Cheer. That is Saturday, 12/13, at 6:00. So. How about water quality updates?
I am, I went to Mastech today to see a new urine diversion toilet that, so I got to see it up close. And it's being developed by an American manufacturer, which really as, will help move that whole technology along. It's, it's fully porcelain. It looks like a regular toilet, so it, people would be amenable, most likely, to put it in their homes. And it, you know, it could be a game changer for places that we can't sewer, we can't put IAs in. Once it's approved, it's, UD still isn't approved by the state. But I just wanted to share that, that is coming. They anticipate that model to be advertised more broadly within the next month or two. So.
It's a, it's a complete mindset change for a lot of people. It really is. But, makes a lot of sense.
And seeing the toilet up close and personnel, it will make the mindset change a little bit easier.
This version is much better. It's far superior compared to the, when they were trying to-
And, and just having an American manufactured product will likely speed up approvals from America, the American Plumbing Association and the State Plumbing Association. So, I mean, that's the, the whole technology, UD is still being tested. They're, you know, we don't have state approval yet, but being able to go and see the new product and know that manufacturers are buying into this, I think was promising for what we're doing for water quality.
Yeah, once they flush it all out, it's good. So.
Exactly. Okay. On that, town manager updates?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Operational budget reviews have started. CIP reviews will be commencing shortly. Negotiations continue. Also, looking for the board's approval for closing the Town Hall for an organizational day that may be incorporated for a portion of the day with, with some training or training component. That would be Friday, December 19th. And then also, relative to road closure, starting next Monday, December 15th, detours and closures on Route 130 or Main Street from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM are anticipated due to the wastewater Phase Two project. Maps and details are on the town website under wastewater and, or I should say wastewater management. And then also, you will see a lot of staging going on over here behind Town Hall. It's all connected with our project. And that's it. But would like the board's approval for December 19th. Just as a reminder, that was mentioned in the past, there could be another Training Day, strictly training, probably for January, February. But, right now, it's just December 19th that I'm looking for. So, as a reminder, we would be working, but we would not be open to the public.
Is, do you want, do you want to vote? Is there a motion to approve town closure for working purposes on December 19th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
If we're available.
I'm sorry?
If we're available.
Yes.
Okay. There's nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.